Traditional speaker. One representative of the application can then speak in rebuttal if so desired. After hearing comments on each case, the board will then immediately deliberate and vote on that case before moving on to the next case on our agenda. Please note that when the board is deliberating, members of the public are not permitted to comment. Any member of the public may request a copy of the board's decision on a particular case by contacting our office before 1:00 PM tomorrow at (6) 736-480, or by accessing our website at treeportcattlempc.com. For consent agenda items and other agenda items not requiring a public hearing, public comments can be made upon request by filling out an MPC comment slip. If comments are requested for a specific agenda item, the chair will offer an opportunity for those comments prior to the commission taking action on those agenda items. All of the MPC board decisions are subject to appeal either to the city council or parish commission, depending on the location of the property in question. Please note that it is your responsibility to contact the appropriate governing body about their procedures as related to matters you are concerned with. Copies of this document and the phone numbers to contact the governing bodies are available on the table next to the podium and in the entryway to this room. As a courtesy, ladies and gentlemen, please remember to turn off all cell phones while the MPC board is in session. The commission values your testimony and appreciates your compliance with these guidelines. Thank you. First item on our agenda is the approval of our minutes from our March 1st meeting.
Motion to approve.
Second.
I have a motion by Mr. Andrews, a second by Ms. Smith. Any questions? Hearing none, all in favor, vote aye. Yes.
We have a...
I don't know.
Can I just press a yes or no?
Yes. It's working?
All in favor, vote yes, all opposed, no.
I can't, I'll agree to it.
You're good.
Press a no now?
Yep.
I did not press.
Oh, there it is.
Yeah, that's it, you did. That, the minutes are adopted, thank you. Next we'll move to our consent agenda. Our first item on our consent agenda is case number SP-50-17. It's a, oh, I'm sorry, it's our consent agenda. So, on our, on this consent agenda, ladies and gentlemen, we have a case, item number six through fourteen on our consent agenda. What's your pleasure?
Motion to approve, Mr. Chair.
Okay, I have a motion by Mr. Young, a second by Ms. Smith, to adopt the consent agenda. Any questions? Hearing none, all in favor, vote yes, opposed, no. It passes, we have adopted this consent agenda. If you were here, ladies and gentlemen, for item six through fourteen, it has been adopted, it's been passed, and so you're certainly welcome to stay, but you don't have to if you're here for any of those items. Thank you.
Ladies in back.
We will now move to our public hearings. Our first case for a public hearing is case number CA-3-17, opposing and abandonment. Is there anyone here to speak on behalf of this particular case?
Mr. Chairman, Jimmy Whittington, Caddo Parish Public Works, 505 Travis Street, Suite 820. This is a request that we forward into you for your consideration, that we received from a property owner that owns a, I believe, fourteen acre tract of land that's got an old alleyway and a portion of a street dedication through the middle of his property. These were created on a subdivision plat that was filed back in 1912. The alleyway is not there, there are no utilities there, and the parish has no objection to the granting of this request.
Thank you. Is anyone else present today who'd like to speak on behalf of this application? Anyone present today who'd like to speak in opposition to this application?
No.
Seeing none, commission, what's your pleasure?
Motion to approve.
I have a motion by Ms. Smith, a second by Mr. Andrews. Any questions? Hearing none, all in favor, vote yes, all opposed, no. There you go. All right, that passes. Our next case is case number SC-53-17, preliminary and final plat. Someone here today to speak on behalf of this application?
Mr. Chairman, Reggie Lewis, Rayleigh &amp; Associates, 4913 Shed Road, here presenting a subdivision plat on the St. Charles Place subdivision, Unit 15 subdivision that we've had under development for many, many years, and continue with that development.
Any questions? All right, thank you, no questions. Thank you. Are there any other people here to speak in support of this application? Anyone else to speak in support of the application? Is anyone here to speak in opposition to this application? All right, thank you. Commission, what's your pleasure?
Motion to approve.
Second.
I have a motion by Mr. Andrews, a second by Dr. Pennywell. Any other questions? Hearing none, all in favor, vote yes, all opposed, no. All right, that passes. Our next case is case number C-75-16, remanded, this is only request. Mr. Sweeney, I understand we have some information on this particular case?
Yes, sir, the applicant has requested that this case be deferred until the May 3rd MPC meeting to give her additional time to work on her site plan. We concur with that request, and that was actually part of our recommendation, which is very specific.
See if anybody wants to...
Is anybody here to speak either in opposition or support of this particular application? All right, seeing none, we need a motion to defer.
Mr. Chair, motion to defer, continue to the next meeting.
Second.
I have a motion to defer by Ms. Young, a second by Ms. Damon Two. If there are no other questions, all in favor, vote yes, opposed, no. All right, the deferment passes. Our next case, item eighteen, case number C-29-17, this is only request. Is there someone here to speak in support of this application?
Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman, Alyssa Laramore with CBS Collision, 2575 East Seventieth Street.
Welcome.
Thank you.
Does anyone have any questions to, on this particular case?
Mr. Chairman, can you tell us a little bit about this particular operation?
Yes, sir, it has been in existence, it was a non-conforming use. It was previously superior paint and body, and I took it over in September, unaware that it was not properly zoned, and they have been operating for, I believe, twenty-six years at that location, and I have cleaned the property, making improvements to the property, and have continued to operate it as a collision repair facility. That's the history of the property.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
All right, anybody, any other questions? Still speaking. Thank you. Is there anyone else here to speak in support of this application? Anyone who'd like to speak in support of this application? Are there any persons here who'd like to speak in opposition to this application? All right.
Mr. Chair, motion to approve.
Second.
I have a motion by Mr. Young, a second by Ms. Damon Two, Mr. Sweeney.
Just wanted to make certain that you do know the staff recommendation is that it go to a B3E, which would allow for the operation to continue its non-conforming status going forward, and not the original I-1 that was requested. The applicant is in agreement with that.
With that step, Mr. Sweeney.
With that step, okay, thank you.
I second with that step.
All right, so, we have a motion by Ms. Young, a second by Ms. Damon Two, to adopt with the stipulations. Any other questions? Hearing none, all in favor, vote yes, all opposed, no. All right, the motion passes.
Just in time.
Our next, next case, item nineteen, case number P-6-17, this is zoning request. Is someone here to speak on behalf of that?
Whitaker others, 934 Erie Street, Street Port 71106. I'm representing the Country Club Estates group, as well as the Camelot group that'll be in the next zoning request. There's some adjacent properties there that are on the south side of Southern Loop Road, between Wallace Lake Road and North Ferry Road. The reason for the application for all of these tracks to be zoned at the same time really came from staff in trying to come up with a more of a master plan before the new UDC comes in place, so that Mr. Kilpatrick, and I'll turn the mic over to him in a second, go ahead and move forward with his self-storage facility that, that he wants to get working on now as soon as the ground dries up. Beyond that, I have nothing, nothing further to add, except we think it's a great area that's going to come into, you know, come into commerce over the next few years and generate, generate some jobs and some taxes for the area, and that just seems logical with the great job that Providence folks are doing on the north side of the road with residential, that the south side be complementary businesses to support that residential. There are no other questions.
Anybody, any questions? Thank you, Whit. Anybody else? Yes, sir.
Mr. Chairman, I'm GT Complacency from Ruston. If approved, we plan to build a real fine facility that will enhance the beauty of the neighborhood and serve the needs of the people that are in that neighborhood.
Any questions? Any commissioners have any questions? Thank you. Is there anyone else here to speak in support of this application? Is anyone here who'd like to speak in opposition to this application? Seeing none, commission, what's your...
Mr. Chair, motion to approve.
Second.
I have a motion by Mr. Young, a second by Ms. Smith, to approve. Any questions? Hearing none, all in favor, vote yes, all opposed, no. Our next case is case P-7-17, this is zoning request. Is there someone here to speak on behalf of this application?
This, this is the adjacent track, so I have nothing further to add.
Whit, if you would, just come back and state your name and address for the record.
Whitaker others, 934 Erie Street, Street Port 71106.
Thank you. Anyone else here to speak in support of this application?
Again, I'm GT Complacency from Ruston, and this would be the second development.
What's your address in Ruston, if you will?
1363 Ruston, Louisiana.
Thank you, thank you so much. Anyone, any other questions, anybody, any questions? All right, thank you. Anyone else to speak in support of the applications? If not, is anyone here to speak in opposition to this application? Seeing no one, commission, what's your pleasure?
Motion to approve. Second.
I have a motion by Ms. Damon Two, a second by Ms. Smith, to accept. All, all in favor, vote yes, all opposed, no. Our next case is case number P-8-17, this is only request of use approval. Someone here to speak on behalf of that?
Hello, my name is Steve Buttry, 6548 Village Springs Drive, Plano, Texas, and I'm here to speak on behalf of the applicant. Our request is to change his only from R1D to B1 with use approval for medical facilities for, for me, ER and micro hospital. And I'm available to ask any questions.
All right, questions?
I have questions, just curiosity more than anything. I think it's a great concept, I've been reading about it. And, are you part of a hospital system or independent?
Correct.
How many beds are you going to have?
You'll need ten inpatient beds, and either seven or eight ER facility beds.
That's terrific. Mostly for like acute care, you can keep people overnight then?
Correct, exactly.
Well, hopefully you'll be welcome to the neighborhood, that's great.
Appreciate it.
Any other questions? All right, thank you. Is anyone else here who is here to speak in support of this application? All right, is anyone here to speak? Anyone here to speak in, you want to? Go ahead. Wait, sir, will you come back up just one second, please? Yeah, but no question?
Will you be accepting Medicare and Medicaid?
Yes, this will be a licensed hospital, so yes.
All right, thank you.
Is there anyone here to speak in opposition to this application? Anyone speak in opposition? All right, seeing none.
Mr. Chair, motion to approve.
Second.
I've got a motion by Ms. Young, a second by Ms. Smith. If there are no other questions, all in favor, vote yes, opposed, no. The next case for public hearing is case number C-36-17 and P-9-17, it's a proposed UDC fee ordinance, application by the MPC to enact an ordinance relative to a new fee schedule associated with the Unified Development Code.
Yes, sir, and I'll just briefly go through, I gave you an initial copy of this back when we met last time in, in March, and, and the sentence has sent you additional information, and now you have the most pristine version of it, it's now available to you in your packet, and I'm just going to briefly go over some of the highlights, and then if you have questions, I'll be willing to answer them. First of all, this is the new fee schedule associated with Unified Development Code.
Mr. Sweeney, can I, one second? Mr. Chair, I'm not sure if everybody still left in the audience understands, we've handled all the cases, and they've all been approved except for one we, I just want to make sure that some people weren't sitting around thinking, all the cases have been approved. Okay?
But you're welcome to stay.
You're welcome to stay and watch, if you want, but I, sometimes it gets lost in how fast we go, and I didn't, and if you don't come every month, you may not know, and I didn't want somebody still sitting here thinking we were still on cases, all the cases have been handled, so. Okay, yeah, you're more than welcome to stay. You stay, trust me, this is real exciting, so.
We're not for entertainment.
I'm sorry, Mr. Sweeney.
That's okay, no, I think that's a good thing to do, I appreciate that. All right, so, hopefully you can see me, but anyway, so, so this is the new fee structure associated with Unified Development Code. The, we provided you with a updated version of those fees that are in your packet. Remember, the city council did an update of their fees back in December of 2015, that is our starting point, so there's a lot of fees that have not been changed, there are some fees that have been adjusted, but primarily, the majority of those fees are being sustained as they were in 2015. So there is a survey that we did of various cities that included Bossier City, Baton Rouge, Lafayette, Tyler, Plano, and Denton, Texas, in which it was the same group of cities that we compared to when the fee structure was adjusted in 2015. And be aware of the fact that the majority of those communities do have adopted Unified Development Codes, it's a good comparative study between them. As I said before, this is for both the city and the parish, but you've got to understand something, these will be two separate ordinancees, that's why there's two separate numbers, because the city has a right to set the fees the way they want to, and the parish has a right to set the fees the way they want to, so they still have that prerogative. So even though we have a Unified Development Code that we're pursuing, the fee ordinance is a separate standalone ordinance, separate from the UDC. You don't put fees in the UDC because you never know when those fees are going to change, you'd have to be constantly changing the ordinance, so it's very cleanly separated. So, the parish has not updated their fees since 2008, so that's going on nine years, and you've got to realize too, that we do not retain the fees from the parish. All application fees and all the fees that you're seeing here, we have to return those fees to the parish. Unlike the city, with the city, their fee structure is such that we get to retain those fees. In fact, that's a very significant source of revenue for the MPC, is the application and service fees that come off of this. So we knew that in 2015, and we're very aware of it for 2017 as we go forward. So, I'm going to get the highlights of what some of the changes are, but I'm not going to get any deeper than what you want me to. We did adjust the map fees upward somewhat, as well as our electronic media fees that had not been updated, and we went from eight dollars to twelve, and eight dollars to ten dollars respectively. Zoning determinations, which means if somebody wants a letter from us saying what the zoning is, we raise that fee from fifty to seventy-five dollars. Certificates of occupancies for commercial and industrial facilities are staying the same, they were raised last time from one hundred to one twenty-five. The home-based fees for home-based occupations would be adjusted from fifty to seventy-five dollars. Not, not huge jumps, but something that you need to be aware of. But we also put in a caveat, which we think is important, that if somebody is in violation of the code, knowing that they were supposed to have the certificate of occupancy, whether it's commercial or home-based, they would have to pay double the fees because of the fact that they went against our ordinance, and this is a very common tool in most cities, and it's, since we don't have a, and that means instead of a hundred and twenty-five, it would be two hundred and fifty dollars, instead of being seventy-five dollars for home-based, it would be...
For every year they missed?
No, for just getting the initial one. So, this is a common source of way of, it's almost like a penalty, it's basically a penalty fee for not having adhered to the ordinance, and is commonly used, I just want you to be aware of that. There are some additional fees that were added, the code text fee would be five hundred dollars. Administrative site plan modifications would be adjusted, would be created to be at one hundred dollars. Your special use permits basically take the place of your special exception approvals, so the pricing of those two are about the same, which is the seven hundred and fifty dollar base price that's already actually in the current fee structure. But we also added in the cost for a site plan and a cost per acre as well. One of the more interesting changes has to do with the sign permits. You've got to remember something, and I stated this to you at lunchtime, one of the most important things we had to do with the UDC is to have a content neutral sign ordinance, that was mandated by the courts back about a year and a half ago, a year and a half ago. They said, basically said, you can't talk about what's on the sign to regulate the sign. So, that's true with every city, and so when we reached that point, I instructed our consultants back, way back when we were doing our initial drafts, the second and third draft, to make sure we met the law on that. And so because of that, the classifications are different, but the fee structure is essentially the same, but the names have been switched around because we had to do that from a legal perspective. One thing I will bring your attention to is that, once again, if a sign has been put up and they haven't gone through Mr. Clark's office to get a sign permit, the fees would double, so what would be normally maybe a thirty-five dollar fee for a sign would then be seventy dollars. It's kind of a basic, again, an incentive to comply with the law and to do your research. We have zoning interpretations, which has to do with how we interpret the code, that fee would be a hundred and twenty-five dollars. On temporary use permits, we decided to do a fee of basically fifty bucks for most of them. The only situation where that would be different would be for batch plant, rock crushing, and borrow pits. Those are much more complex and have a greater impact, so we basically are going to require them to go through a site planning process, and the base fee for that, because it is more intensive and requires greater analysis, is seven hundred and fifty dollars. I'm not going to say to you that, again, also another fee thing on the, on the permits for signs is that we did include a five hundred dollar fee for electronic billboards, and right now, there is a five hundred dollar fee that's in there, so it's not really a great change, two hundred and fifty dollars for your, for your static boards as it stands right now. But we also included a twenty-five dollar fee per billboard for what we call our review fee, because what's going to happen with billboards, we're going to have to do a cap and replace and credit system, so in order for our staff to, to handle that and to coordinate that, this helps pay for that service, because we have to be on, in a monitoring mode to know exactly where all the billboards are, and where they're taking some down and getting credit to go somewhere else. So we're going to have to become bankers and analysts when it comes to the signed credits for billboards, and this is something that we talked about, the cap and trade process and the credit system, this is something that we talked about with Lamar, was that system, how to do that, and so we knew that was going to be an added burden to the staff and felt that that was a reasonable fee to charge, a twenty-five dollar fee. Those are the basic changes. If you have any questions, I'll be more than willing to answer you on those questions as best I can, either myself or Stephen Jean, but we do recommend these fee adjustments. I think you'll notice on the fee structure that we gave you, the ones that are marked through are the ones that, what they used to be, and then the new ones are shown, I believe, in red, and so that will allow you to kind of see what adjustments are occurring. Again, these are the fees that we actually get to retain in the city, but do not get to retain in the parish. Now, I will be honest with you, this is the city council's decision, it is the parish commission's decision. If it comes before them, they may decide they want something different, and that is their right to do so. But this has to start with you guys, because you're the recommending body on all things related to the UDC, as well as the fee structure. Any questions?
Any questions? Thank you, Mr. Sweeney. Commission, what's your pleasure?
Motion to approve. Second.
I have a motion by Ms. Damon Two, a second by Ms. Smith, to approve, I have twenty-two. If there are no, if any other questions? Hearing none, all in favor, vote yes, all opposed, no. Motion passes. Thank you. That will conclude our public hearing section. We'll now move to, we'll now move to other business. We have a master plan implementation report, staff reports.
Yes, I do have a few items to mention, and won't take me too long to do that. All right, so, basically, under the master plan report, I wanted to bring it to your attention that on March the 23rd, we had a meeting with the parish commission about the UDC. There was an attempt to provide for two amendments, one amendment which was not legally enforceable, which was to exempt all existing businesses from the UDC and parish, and the other one was not forwarded properly. And so, and it failed to get the necessary votes for the amendment, they had to have eight votes, they only had seven. So at the end of the day, out of somewhat of confusion, nothing was accomplished on the 23rd, it was almost like it never happened. So, under the direction of the parish attorneys, they said, you're going to have to bring it back for reintroduction, and so we had a conversation about this on Monday, April the 3rd, in which the parish commission decided to reintroduce the UDC on the 20th of April. They have asked too, to have a meeting with me and some of my staff members to talk about, with the rural areas, the commissioners that have primarily rural territories, to kind of go over the UDC and to answer, ask some questions of us to clarify some issues, and we have agreed to do that. That meeting is supposed to occur sometime in the following next seven to ten days. Once that meeting occurs, it will come back onto the agenda for the 20th, as it is proposed to, then be introduced, then a final vote, if everything goes according to plan, would be on May the 4th, which is enough time for it to go into effect on May the 15th. So, just having to do a little bit of a do-loop here, but it's not coming back to you at this stage of the game, so I want you to understand that we're going to kind of work through some of those things, and so if anything else changes, I'll let you know, but the reality is, that's where we're at right now, so we're waiting for this meeting to be set up this coming week. The city is already on board, they've done their part, y'all have done your part, so we're just waiting on the parish commission, and I'm more than willing to work with them through anything that they need to have done, because this has to be a cooperative effort, so. The other thing I want to mention after that, under other staff reports, is that I, I hate to tell you this, but we are losing one of our board members, and that being Dr. Pennywell, who, his term expired, and the mayor chose to replace his position with a gentleman by the name of Curtis Joseph, who's an attorney, and now we're going to have two attorneys on board. And I just want to say that I, I really hate to lose Dr. Pennywell. He has committed tremendous... He has committed tremendous time and energy to this board and your contributions will not be forgotten. I know you know Curtis George, you've worked with him in the past and, I mean Curtis Joseph. And I know that based on our conversation that you and I had, that he's gonna be a good addition to the NPC board.
He's a nice guy. He worked for us and worked for us.
I would like to say I had something to give you today in recognition, but it was such a quick turnaround that I didn't have time to do anything, but, so we may be asking you to come back later for some type of honorary effort. And I just wanted to let you know again, we really appreciate it and Curtis Joseph will be coming on board for our meeting on May the third. That'll be his first meeting. His confirmation will probably occur April the eleventh with the city council. And so just wanted everyone to, to know that, so. And let's see if there's anything else. I, is there anything else that I? I can't think of anything else that I have as far as items to, to bring to your attention.
Any other commissioner? I even for future discussion. Let me say as well that I have had the privilege, only a brief time to serve with Dr. Pennywell, but I've known him for over twenty years and so I wanna thank him for his commitment. And the good thing is that his, his service at the NPC ended, ends his time serving here, but it certainly doesn't end his time serving his community. Because long before he came to the NPC, he was serving his community and I know long after he leaves the NPC, he'll continue to do the same thing, so. Thank you, Dr. Pennywell, a friend, a brother. I consider him a mentor, a model and motivation for me as well. So thank you so much for being here.
I enjoyed it all.
Miss you.
You wanna say something?
No, 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 I didn't, I left it all.
I wanted to say something, excuse me. I've enjoyed serving with Dr. Pennywell and that is my classmate. We graduated high school together, so I wanted you to know that. And I also wanted you all to know that I was involved in a terrible car wreck, but I'm doing fine. It happened about two weeks ago, but I'm doing fine. I didn't get hurt. So I'm doing fine. Yes, it was on Olive and Erie.
That's where they have those feeder roads that make it really.
It's all those cones right there.
And Dr. Pennywell, I'd like to say thank you too. I have had the privilege to get to know you better last year when we were seated next to one another.
That's right.
You are the strong silent type. I learned a lot from you and I appreciate it and look forward to what you're gonna do for the community next.
Thank you.
Please keep in touch.
Thank you, I appreciate that. And I've enjoyed working with you guys, it's been great.
Best part was sitting by me.
That's right.
That's why I had him to change my seat.
Please, don't try to forgive the commissioner for that, it wasn't their fault, man. Listen, if there's nothing else, let me say that the, the NPC board will convene into executive session pursuant to Louisiana statute, revised statute forty-two colon sixteen and revised statute forty-two seventeen eight two, to discuss matters relative to executive director's employment contract with NPC, NPC legal counsel services and litigation updates in two cases. While in the executive session, no votes will be taken and we will reconvene the regular meeting immediately following the executive session.
And the executive session will be in the conference room behind here.
How about this drink of water? I thought it was a big drink of water.